Okay, good evening and welcome to the City of Lowell zoning Board of Appeals for Monday, June 26, 2023. Couple housekeeping items before we begin. If you have a cell phone, please place your phone on silent, stunned. And if you have to hold any conversations, please take them out to the hallway so as not to disturb any of the proceedings. Tonight's voting member would be Member Nickerson. So with that, I'm going to start with continued business. Before we start continued business, I want to note, well, Mr. Nickerson, uh, Member Nickerson just joined the board. I believe his first meeting was last, uh, last meeting, Mr. Nickerson?
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, so I'm not sure if he's had the opportunity to review the prior continued items, but if he has not and has not signed the appropriate affidavit, um, then just to, just for record, the vote would have to be four to nothing. So just to let people know. Um, and we'll, I guess we'll deal with it when we get to that. So, ZBA 2023-7, petitioner is Mary Burns, property located at 209 Gibson Street. It's zoning, seeking a variance under Section 5.1. Mary Burns has applied to the Lowell zoning Board of Appeals, seeking approval to construct a single-family home at 209 Gibson Street. Subject property is located in traditional, single-family zoning district. Property requires variance approval per Section 5.1 for relief from minimum lot area, minimum lot area per dwelling unit, minimum frontage, minimum side yard setback, maximum floor area ratio requirements, and any other relief required under the Lowell zoning ordinance. Good evening, counsel. How are you?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. For the record, my name is John Geary of Geary &amp; Geary LLP, 32 Church Street, Lowell, Mass. I'm here tonight representing the applicant, Mary Burns, and we also have Brian Malisi of Haley Ward, the engineer for the project. Before I start, Mr. Chairman, do we know if, if a Member Nickerson has, has read the, or watched the meeting?
I'll leave that to Mr. Member Nickerson if you'd like to answer the inquiry, please.
So in other words, would you be voting on this application?
Yes.
Okay, excellent. Thank you. So with that, Mr. Chairman, um, as, as you mentioned, this is a continued hearing relative to the applicant's request for variances pursuant to 5.1 of the zoning ordinance regarding the application to construct a single-family home. Sorry.
I just want to interrupt. Um, Member Nickerson, if you have not viewed the meeting and signed the affidavit, you're not qualified to render a vote on the application. Is that correct? Okay, thank you.
So to clarify, you have watched the meeting but, and signed the appropriate affidavits, Mr. Member Nickerson?
Who did this?
You have watched the prior meeting and have signed the appropriate applica-
I've watched the previous one.
Okay. So, uh, you have watched the prior meeting when this matter was before the board, prior to your, you have not. Okay. So counsel, I guess the answer to that, Member Nickerson, is he did not watch the prior meeting prior to his appointment to the board on this continuance. So, uh, at this point, he would not be qualified to vote on this. So it would be a four-nothing vote.
Would the chairman consider a continuance?
Uh, I would leave that to my fellow members of the board and what their thoughts are. If that's what the, what the applicant is asking for, I, for one, in fairness to the applicant and fairness to the public, I understand there's, there is a lot of opposition to this petition, particular petition. But I think it's only fair to have a full board here in presence to hear it. Unfortunately, Member Hovey is out of state and Vice Chair Peck unfortunately could not make it tonight. But I think I, for one, would be open to another, uh, continuance in fairness to the public. Uh, I will, with that being said, for the time being, I'll suspend the rules and open it up to my fellow board members on what their thoughts are on the petitioner's request for a continuance. Uh, let's, Member, our, Member McCarthy?
I would like to give more consideration to the neighbors and the residents of the city that came out tonight, uh, that are here. Um, it's no guarantee that at the hearing that we'll have in, I think Dylan would be eligible to be on if we continue it in August. Is that correct?
That, that's correct.
There's no guarantee that we'll have better attendance from the board in August either. Um, I, I kind of think that we're, we have so many people out tonight that are residents that took their time to come down, to be heard, and to, um, to, to be part of this process, that we should respect that. And we should go forward with the hearing, in my opinion, because we don't know if late August is going to be any different. I know, I, I often have plans, um, in the summer. So I don't know if I'll be part of the, but I'll do my best to be here. But I'm just saying, summer schedules are summer schedules, and we should respect the residents that came out.
Okay. Um, Member Brier, your thoughts?
If appropriate, Mr. Chairman, I would move to, uh, continue this matter to a future date.
Okay. Uh, Member Proko?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would also agree to a continuance because I, again, I don't think it's fair for either side, even though, um, you know, everyone's out here. But it's, it just wouldn't make sense, um, when one cannot vote and we have two other members, you know, out.
Thank you. Um, and, uh, Member Nickerson, uh, I'm, unfortunately can't vote, but I would, your, I mean, not that I don't value your opinion on this, but I think for this time, for this board right now, um, I, I think a continuance should be warranted on this, again, for the public, for the interest of the public, especially in line with this petition being, um, what it is and prior opposition. Uh, I, for one, will just note, I mean, I respect the opinions of every single member of this board. Uh, I know there's been a lot of animosity in some instances in some of these things. So, uh, we are a Board of Appeals. Every, we follow the code of the zoning code set out and the criteria set out by the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Legislature codified through the zoning code. We are five members, full, two members, that are alternates that fill in when a full member cannot vote or be present. We all have different opinions on everything. I respect every single one of these board members' opinions, and I want to hear it, every single one of them, if possible. We may agree in some instances, we may disagree on some instances. I know there's many times I've disagreed with Member McCarthy. I've agreed with him a lot more times, too. Same thing with Member Brier, Member Proko. So, um, but I think it's only fair for the public, for the petitioner, for the City of Lowell, in light of this particular project, that we give an opportunity, that we have a full board presence, so all opinions can be heard. So with that being said, counsel, what's, uh, what is, what is your client's will?
Yeah, so the, the client would wish to continue. Uh, I'm not sure what meetings available in August. Is it the, is there a second meeting in August?
I think we only have one meeting in July and one meeting in August.
So, uh, is the August meeting available, or do we need to go to September?
Dylan?
The August meeting is available.
Okay.
How does the resident, the, uh, the notice-
It'll be a public, if this will be the public notice, if, 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 if-
Mr. Chairman, we would be happy to continue to September, if that makes everybody happy.
Okay. Um, September, uh, what's our meeting in September, Dylan?
Uh, the first meeting in September is September 11th.
September 11th. Okay. Um, that being said, can I have a motion to continue, please?
Three, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion for ZBA 2023-7 for variance for 209 Gibson Street to be continued to September 11th, 2023.
Second.
Motion by Member McCarthy, seconded by Member Proko. Can I have a roll call, please?
Vice Chair Callahan?
Approve continuance to September 11th, 2023.
Member McCarthy?
Approve continuance to September 11th, 2023.
Member Proko?
Approve continuance to September 11th, 2023.
Member Brier?
Approval.
Uh, it's been approved. The matter's been continued as in September 11th, 2023. For the public record, this is the only notice of that hearing. We'll see you on September 11th.
Thank you, thank you for consideration.
Thank you.
[inaudible]
No, it's okay, Tim.
[inaudible]
Don't worry about it, don't worry about it, John, yes.
[inaudible]
Oh, okay. Oh.
Really?
I think that's-
No, that wasn't him.
That's Freddie Bob, yes. Now, I know I have time to watch the video.
Yeah, now, now you can, yeah, so. Okay. Moving on to continued business, uh, next item we have is ZBA 2023-11, special permit. The applicant is Farid Ghea, property located at 459 Broadway. Uh, Farid Ghea has applied to Lowell zoning Board of Appeals, seeking approval to increase the number of cars that can be sold at 459 Broadway Street. Subject property is located in the urban mixed-use zoning district. Property requires a special permit approval pursuant to Section 4.5 for an extension of non-conforming use and any other relief required under the Lowell zoning ordinance. Do we have anybody present for the applicant for 459 Broadway Street? Seeing nobody present, I understand, we had communications, Dylan, you want to, can you just, for the public record, can you just fill in with?
The applicant stated that he has moved from the site and moved his business out of Lowell to North Andover.
So, yeah, so he's no longer, I mean, so, and you made every attempt to inform, well, he basically said, "I closed my business," and he knows, so he knows about the hearing. He was here the last time. And, um, yeah, so you've made every attempt, and he's, does sound like he's not gonna, maybe possibly not gonna prosecute this, or?
That's correct.
Okay. Um, so what would our options would be, would we consider, can we consider this as a withdrawal, or our options would be just vote on and deny it, or what are the, what are, what are the options?
The applicant did not request a withdrawal, so I believe-
There's no formal withdrawal. He hadn't asked for a formal withdrawal, right?
Correct.
Uh, can we, as a, we can, we in a board, as a board, based on his failure to appear, can possibly consider, and communications with you can possibly consider it as a withdrawal, correct?
I don't know. I think through that.
I mean, or we can just take the vote and deny it.
That's correct. Do that.
Okay. Uh, what's the wishes, well, I'll, I'll just leave it to the board. What are the wishes of the board? Uh, listen, Mr. Member Proko?
Can we, I mean, it's closed. Can we just, like, would, consider it withdrawn, or?
I believe there needs to be a written withdrawal, a request for withdrawal, um, from the applicant, which we did not receive.
Okay.
Or just consider it a denial, is that?
I don't know.
I think we have to take a vote.
Yeah. That would, that would be my opinion, just deny.
And, and again, for, uh, for the record, um, um, Member Nickerson, you didn't see the prior, no? Okay, thanks. Um, so Member Nickerson is disqualified from voting on this petition as well. Um, Member Brier, do you have any comments on?
No.
Okay. Um, that being said, um, we'll just proceed to go forward, and can I have a motion, please?
Three, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion for ZBA 2023-11 for a special permit at 459 Broadway Street.
Second.
Motion by Member McCarthy, seconded by Member Proko. Can I have a roll call, please?
Vice Chair Callahan?
Denied.
Uh, Member McCarthy?
Deny.
Member Proko?
Denied.
Member Brier?
Denial.
And I guess, just let the record reflect, the petition wasn't present, the denial was for failure to prosecute, I guess. I don't think it makes a difference, but that being said, um, moving on to new business, we have ZBA 2023-16, variance approval. Applicant is Jose Herrera. Property is located at 17 Burns Street. Uh, Jose Herrera has applied to the Lowell zoning Board of Appeals, seeking approval to convert the existing four-family residential structure to a six-family residential structure at 17 Burns Street. Subject property is located in a traditional multi-family zoning district. Proposal requires variance approval from the zoning Board of Appeals per Section 5.1 for relief from the minimum lot area per dwelling unit and minimum usable open space per dwelling unit requirements per Section 5.3.1 for relief from the landscaped open space requirement, and per Section 6.1 for relief from the minimum off-street parking requirement, minimum parking space dimensional requirements, and maximum curb cup requirements, and any other relief required under Lowell zoning ordinance. Uh, in the application, the applicant also requires site plan review approval from the Lowell Planning Board per Section 11.4, and special permit approval from the Lowell Planning Board per Section 11.3 and Article 12.1. Uh, that does not apply to us. Uh, is anybody present for the applicant? Dylan? Yeah, you have anything, the thing you mentioned before, or?
The applicant was not able to send out their revised rebutter notice, and their sign did not meet the standards. So they would need a continuance to the following-
Did the applicant ask for a continuance, or?
They did over email.
Okay. Uh, okay. Uh, this is under new business, this hasn't been continued before. Um, I'm just recalling previously, a, at the last meeting, there was a, a resident who was present, said she was given notice and thought it was last meeting, and it just seems to be a lot of notice confusions. I just want to make sure that we're, that, that the public is aware of this and it's going to get continued. I don't see anybody else present for the public. Uh, well, was anybody else here for 17 Burns Street? No? Yeah, so. All right. Um, anybody have any other comments, questions, concerns?
I, I'd just like to mention, three, Mr. Chairman, that the notification for the, um, public notice at the site was insufficient, as far as I could tell. It wasn't legible from the right away, and it didn't include a site plan. It seemed to be missing key elements that are required. So I think it'd be good to inform the applicant that they need to, um, uh, follow the notification that's required for signage, uh, on the site. Um, I think, I think, uh, I think that's it.
Thank you, Dennis. Anybody else have any questions, comments?
I would concur, Mr. Chairman, and I agree with the comments of, uh, Member McCarthy.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Brier. And Proko?
Yeah, same here. I agree. Um, when I drove by the property yesterday, I, I walked all the way around, and I only saw that little inadequate sign in the window, which, again, didn't, you'd have to go into, you know, the property itself to see what it was about.
Okay. Member Nickerson?
Okay.
All right. Um, I guess my only question, though, Dylan, would be notice issues, as far as the signage and the, uh, aborder's notices that you said he hadn't gotten out. So what, if we continue this matter, what days are we looking at? Like, how far, we used to, would be the August date, is that what's, um?
The August date is available, yes.
Okay, that would be, okay, that would be sufficient?
That should be sufficient.
Okay. All right. Um, so that'll be August, uh, what, what day was it?
Fourteenth.
August 14th. Okay, great. Okay. Um, that being said, can I have a motion, please?
Three, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion for ZBA 2023-16 for variances at 17 Burns Street, um, to be continued to August 14th, 2023.
Second.
Motion by Member McCarthy, seconded by Member Proko. Can I have a roll call, please?
Vice Chair Callahan?
Approve continuance to August 14th, 2023.
Member McCarthy?
Approve continuance to August 14th, 2023.
Member Proko?
Approve continuance to August 14th, 2023.
Member Brier?
Approval.
Member Nickerson?
Approval.
Okay. Matter's been approved. Moving on to other business, uh, we have a variance extension for 854 Andover Street. Eric Mojica has applied to Lowell zoning Board of Appeals, seeking an extension for variance granted on May 23rd, 2022. Good evening, ma'am. How are you?
Hi. Can you hear me?
You can just-
I'm Erin. My husband's Eric.
Okay, great. So, uh, if you can, uh, one second. There it is. Okay, so, well, I guess you want to just give us an idea. I, we granted this, uh, back on, uh-
This is May 2023.
Yeah.
Or 2022, yeah.
Just looking for an update. So you're looking for an extension. Can you just give us an idea of what, uh, what it is you're seeking as far as the extension's concerned? What, what you're, what you're seeking, you know, like, what the, what the process, where you are in the process, as far as why you're seeking an extension, and, um-
Sure. So we did, um, a renovation on our home, and we decided to phase it into two phases. So we finished the first phase, and now we're looking to do the second phase of the project, just to have better control over the budget. Um, so now we're ready to do the garage portion, which the variances were granted for the first time.
Okay. Um, and sorry, could you just state your name and address for the record again?
Erin Mojica, 854 Andover Street.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay. Um, so, um, this is not a public hearing, so I guess I'll just
open up to my fellow board members as far as what their comments are, questions or concerns that they have. So, uh, the chair recognizes Member Brier. Member Brier, the floor is yours, sir.
I'd be in favor of the extension.
Okay. Thank you, Mark. Uh, chair recognizes Member Proko. Member Proko, the floor is yours, sir.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman. Um, I am also in favor of, of the extension. I mean, it's the fact that you are taking much care in doing the phases to make sure it's done correctly, so you don't have to come back in front of the board is, is a good thing.
Thank you, George. Chair recognizes Member Nickerson. Member Nickerson, the floor is yours, sir.
I'm also in favor of the extension as well.
Thank you, thank you, John. Uh, chair recognizes Member McCarthy. Member McCarthy, the floor is yours, sir.
Uh, three, Mr. Chairman, I just want to ask, the, um, extension is for six months?
Yeah.
And do you, so your intent is to, um, go forward with the permitting of, within the next six months?
Yeah. Yeah, our contractor that did the first phase is ready to go for this-
Oh, that's great to hear.
Pending this meeting.
It's always, you know, contractors get busy in the summer, and so I was always kind of wondering.
So we need the yes.
You have six months. Okay. No worries. I, I'm in favor as well.
It should be a three-month project.
It should. I like that word, "should." Okay. Thank you very much.
Okay. Yeah, and, um, generally speaking, I'm in agreement, uh, on the extension as well. But no, I'm having second thoughts, and I think this does need, this does need to be open to the public, right, Dylan, or no? It's an, it's an extent, it's a variance extension, so does it have to be open to the public, or is it?
I don't believe so, but I'm not 100% certain.
Okay. No? Okay. All right. Well, just for the, just for those purposes, anybody want to speak in opposition to this petition? In opposition? In opposition? Hearing, now the pub, that portion of the hearing is not closed. Any opposition to speak in favor? In favor? Beside yourself, hearing them. That portion of the public proceeding is closed, just to make sure. Um, but, uh, the members of the board appear to be in a, in agreement on this. I am as well, so I think an extension on this makes, uh, makes sense. So with that, can I have a motion, please?
Three, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to extend the variance for six months at 854 Andover Street.
Second.
Motion by Member McCarthy, seconded by Member Brier. Can I have a roll call, please?
Vice Chair Callahan?
Approve extension for six months.
Member McCarthy?
Approve six-month extension.
Member Proko?
Approve six-month extension.
Member Brier?
Approval.
Member Nickerson?
Approve the six-month extension.
Okay, been approved. Wish you the best of luck.
Thank you.
Thanks. So, moving forward, on other business, we have administrative review, 17 Montreal Street, 264, 266 Plain Street. Administrative review to review compliance with special permit, approved on September 27th, 2022, and compliance with outstanding conditions of approval. Good evening, counsel. How are you?
Good evening. Attorney Captain Flood, Flood Law Office, 549 Rogers Street, here on behalf of Pineapple Realty LLC pertaining to, um, the conditions set forth in ZBA 2023. I have, um, read over the, um, comments that were provided by the Department of Planning and Development dated March 2nd, 2023, and I believe I can address most of them, and most of them have been satisfied, subject to a couple of tweaks. Um, the access to the property is located off of Plain Street. We did send correspondence to the occupant of the property, um, on March 23rd, as well as June 14th, confirming that the access is to be off of Plain Street. We also informed them that the hours of operation are as set forth in the permit, from 6:30 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. There should be no more than 14 vehicles on the paved surface. Um, as you can see from the plan submitted today, the landscaping has been installed. There was a fence permit pulled, and the fence was installed. The drainage has been installed. The permit was obtained on August 5th, 2022. We are currently trying to get some clarification from the stormwater team pertaining to the removal from the plan of the oil separators. Um, we were informed that there was discussion between Matt Hammer and the stormwater team that they were not required, and they did not want them. We were just given notification of that today, so I- We, um, were just given notification of that today, so I did not have time to reach out to them to get clarification on that, so we still need to get clarification on that specific issue. We submitted the as-built and landscaping plan, um, as you can see on that plan, the paving is slightly over what was approved by the board, about 418 square feet. We are going to address that tomorrow by removing that additional pavement. We will have a new as-built plan, um, prepared after the pavement is removed to reflect the current amount of pavement. I don't think, I think that is all of the conditions that were set forth.
Thank you, counsel, appreciate it. Um, so, again, this administrative review is not subject to a public hearing, um, so I'll just, uh, leave it up to the, my member, fellow members of the board as to any comments, questions, or concerns, so, uh, Mr. Member McCarthy, do you have any comments, questions?
I just want to ask, when did, what was the date that the approval happened here, um, and the variances were granted? Was that a, a year ago, or two years ago?
I wasn't involved in the initial permitting, um, the decision I have in front of me is dated October 22nd, 2021, the copy that I have, um. It looks like the hearing was in August.
So nearly two years ago, yeah?
Yes.
And, um, it, it was a six-month administrative review that was the condition, and we're about a year and a half beyond that, and we still have empty, or, uh, open, open pieces here.
I.
I'm glad we had the six-month administrative review to address some of these open issues, but I don't have a lot of confidence here that if we just say, um, we'll trust you to do the as-built and remove the pavement, and we'll trust you to work out the stormwater, the gas and oil separator issue, um, I think we should do another six-month administrative review here to hear back, or, or sooner, maybe three-month administrative review, to get the as-built in place, and to hear the response with the gas, the oil and gas separator, because those are not small things. You were supposed to go to site plan and review on the planning board if you had all that pavement, and you were just under it, so you didn't have to, but now you're over it, and we, like I said, we're a year and a half after the administrative review was supposed to happen. And two, and it just seems like sloppiness, in my opinion, so, um, I, I would like to see the board request a three-month administrative review, and in three months, the asphalt is removed, and in three months, we have a determination whether or not the gas and oil separators are installed, or don't need to be installed, as to, and why, because when the board does a condition for gas and oil separators, and then they determine that they're not required, I kind of wonder about that, and so I'd like to just have more information there.
Okay.
So if, if I can have support from my other board members, I'd like to see us try to tighten this up a bit, and get a three-month administrative view to answer those two questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Dennis. Um, Mark, any comments or concerns?
Correct me if I'm wrong, counselor, but I don't think there would be any objection to that three-month review, correct?
Absolutely not. I plan on making sure all of the conditions are complied with.
Yeah, it, that's the way it appears to me, you've made every indication that it's your desire to remedy any outstanding condition.
Yes.
And I think we should also note that, um, you were not the original legal representative on this project, were you?
No, I wasn't, I was recently retained.
Okay, all right, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mark. Uh, Member Proko, any comments or concerns?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, um, not much concern, I, I think, uh, I, I think Attorney Flood would be the right candidate to ensure that this flows through properly. But my question is, what was the issue before that, sorry, do you know what the issue was that delayed this, the oil separators from happening?
I'm not sure, um, I spoke with Matt Hammer earlier today, because I was not aware that they were not installed, and they weren't required by the stormwater team to be, be installed, um, so that was my first communication pertaining to that, when I asked him. So I think what we need to do, it was so late in the day, I couldn't, we couldn't get in touch with anyone at the stormwater team to verify it, so my plan is to go back to them and verify why they don't want it, because the question would then be, arise, do I have to come back in and get a modification of the plan, of the approval, because the city is not requiring the oil separators? So, uh, there's just a little bit more to do, um, I, I thought I had pretty much everything resolved until this afternoon, so my goal is to get it all resolved, get us in compliance with the conditions, and move forward.
Okay, thank you, yeah, I, I would agree that a, a three-month, not a six-month administrative review would be appropriate. And that would obviously, you know, make them accountable, so I agree with Member McCarthy, thank you.
Thank you, George. Uh, Member Nickerson, any questions, comments, concerns?
No, I would agree, the three-month would be great, um, because anything to do with gas and oil and stormwater is kind of, um, alarming, so that would definitely be something to make sure you had a solid plan there.
Thank you, John. Um, I, I would tend to agree, um, and counsel, I appreciate you stepping in on this, because it was before us a couple months ago on this administrative review, and we hadn't received any response from, prior to your representation, any response from your client, other than I believe Attorney Cox had withdrawn his representation from them, and that's how we got to where we're at, but it sounds to me like, once you got on board, is gung-ho, get everything done before you get in front of us, and, uh, it looks like, most of the stuff that we, the concerns that DPD had, and the board would have, are being remedied, with the exception of a couple of things, which I know you're gonna get, um, get accomplished, so, um, Dennis, do you have any other further comments?
I, I do, I just want to say, I, I do believe we were given direction from, uh, DPD or the stormwater to ask for a condition for the gas and oil separators, so if they could just ask, tell us why they no longer want them, I don't feel that, as a board, we came up with that on our own, and so if they're now determining that they're not required, I think we can trust that that's the right thing to do, we just need some answers.
Uh, yeah, and I, thank you for reminding me, I recall that that was the case, I do remember.
Yeah.
That was a proposed condition from.
Right.
From them, because, uh, otherwise, yeah, we wouldn't have come up with that on our own.
No.
We all have great minds up here, but, you know, um, but I too would be in agreement with, uh, if three months sounds great, I don't, I mean, I'd be willing to give you a little more, but I understand, we really want to put the, I guess, put the feet to the fire to get, get everything in order, so then the project can just go forward, so, if, uh, if you're in agreement with three months, then, um, I would go with three months, so. Anybody, uh, any other questions, comments, Dennis?
No.
Oh, okay, yeah, it looked like you were ready to say something.
I'm just ready for a motion.
Okay, with that being said, may I, uh, actually, oh, yeah, it's a continuous, motion to continue the administrative review for three months.
Three, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion for 17 Montreal Street for a second administrative review to be, um, happening within three months.
Want to know the date on that, uh, Dylan, do we have?
There's, uh, three months from now, there's a September 25th zoning board meeting, there's, after that, there's an October 12th.
Twenty, uh, September 25th, work for you, counsel?
That should be fine, yeah.
Okay, so September 25th?
Can I just ask a question?
Sure.
So the two things I'm focusing on now are getting confirmation from the stormwater team pertaining to the oil separators, as well as addressing the paving, and getting a new modified as-built plan showing the paving of 3,950 square feet.
Yes.
Under 4,000, right.
I did, okay.
Something under 4,000.
I had it for 1,000, but I think you had a specific, like, 50 or something, okay, so these are the two issues I was standing.
The paving, you said you're going forward on the planning board for that, too, right?
Yes.
So, I mean, that should hopefully take care of itself, but, yes, that would be the two things, so.
Okay.
So September 25th?
Yes.
So the motion is to continue the matter to September 25th, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion by Member McCarthy, seconded by Member Proko, can I have a roll call, please?
Vice Chair Callahan.
Approve continuance of administrative review to September 25th, 2023.
Member McCarthy?
Approve continuance of administrative review to September 25th, 2023.
Member Proko?
Approve continuance for administrative review for September 25th, 2023.
Member Briere?
Approval.
Member Nickerson?
Approval.
Thank you, everyone, have a good night.
All right, have a good night. Okay. Moving forward, we have minutes for approval for June 12th, 2023. Do you have any comments, questions, concerns, revisions, edits? None being heard, can I have a motion to approve the minutes, please?
Three, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve the meeting minutes for Ju, uh, June 12th, 2023.
Second.
I have a motion to approve the minutes by Member McCarthy, seconded by Member Proko, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, aye, opposed, ayes have it, minutes have been approved. Any other comments, announcements, uh, Member McCarthy?
I just want to say that I attended the Lowell Forward Public Forum, uh, at the Smith Baker this past, uh, past week, I guess it was last Wednesday, and it was tremendous, um, you, Tile, is doing a great job of coming up with great ideas. This is a program for master planning, it's not, uh, new zoning bylaw, zoning map being drafted, so I just want to be clear with everybody that this is an initial step on the master plan, that then I hope will lead to us, as a city, going forward with zoning that helps define places that make sense for additional housing, additional density in the city, so we're a ways away from resolving the housing situation with new zoning and zoning maps, I'm just saying, thank you.
Thank you, Member McCarthy, I'm glad you were able to attend that, unfortunately, I didn't have an, up to, had other things with work, I was unable to go, but, um, I'm glad that you were there to, um, report back. About it, so, any other comments, announcements from any of the board members? Member Proko?
No, sir.
Oh, okay, sounded like you, sounded like you had something to say, so, okay, none being said, can I have a motion to adjourn, please?
Three, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn by Member McCarthy, seconded by Member Briere, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no, the ayes have it, meeting is adjourned. Have a good night, everyone.